All right, uh, welcome, everybody. I have Julie Walker here. She's running for the Timpanogas School District, uh, school board seat. Um, so just to start off, will you please just introduce yourself, explain your motivation for running and also give any experience that you have with public service?
Sure. My name is Julie Walker. I've lived in Orem for almost 30 years. Um, I have three children. Um, I, um, own my own business. I own a security business. So I'm the only female in the state of Utah to do that. Um, I've spent the last 15, 16 years, um, volunteering with the PTA. Um, I've served on school community councils for all of my kids' schools in elementary, junior high and high school. I've served on the district community council for Alpine School District. Um, when I say I served in the PTA, I served, uh, eight years as the Orem Council PTA president. So we, um, we saw a lot happen in 2022 with Proposition Two in Orem. Um, they wanted to make an Orem-only district and we spent a lot of time, uh, polling our, our members. I went to a lot of PTA meetings and we would just ask kind of where people were, took the temperature of where people were at. Our, by and large, our PTA membership, um, overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly said, you know, we're not comfortable with an Orem-only district, but hey, we would like to split. Alpine has become quite large. The West has way different needs than we have. And, um, is it really, I mean, we don't want Orem only because we didn't think we had the tax base to handle that, but we would like to look at it at a, a bigger split, a collaborative split. I spent a lot of time, uh, with, on, um, radio with, um, and, and television and in the newspaper because when you're the Orem Council PTA president, um, that's who they want to speak to about if we are in favor or not in favor of the split. So in 2022, um, I sort of led the PTA, um, to take an official position against that Proposition Two. But then, um, because we had said, hey, we don't want an Orem-only district, but we do want to split, I got out of the way and let, um, let, um, democracy take over and, um, stayed out of the way so that we could see if there would be a split or not a split. So now today we are going to split. Uh, my husband actually taught, um, business and marketing and personal financial literacy for 27 years in Alpine School District. And he is now retired and, uh, we still have a kid in the district and, um, I have a lot of knowledge. Um, it appears to me that starting a new district, a new school district from the ground up from scratch seems more comparable to starting a business than stepping into a role on an existing school board. So you need people with all different sorts of skills. That's what makes a good team, I think, when you have a board of directors, is that each person brings something different and a different perspective. And, um, I have, since I have a business background, before I owned my security business, I owned an insurance agency for 10 years. I've helped lots of people start businesses. I've started my own successful businesses. Um, so that's why I'm, I'm running because, um, I live here. Um, these are my people, I feel like. I feel like, um, I have so much to offer in the way of, I'm super collaborative. I'm super, I, I love to hear everyone's ideas and sort of flush out the best idea or look at all of the data, look at all of the information available and then make good decisions from there. But I, I am one of those people that I can disagree about something and, um, I don't think I become disagreeable. I just try to find all the commonplaces that we meet up and then kind of weave that together. Orem, um, has closed, um, three schools in the last, um, eight years, seven years. And every time they closed a school, that meant that that community had to join another community and, and make a new, um, school community at that school. And I was the person that the PTA would send in, um, and, and put that together, make a new PTA board, put those parents together, weave together each school's traditions and culture and try and find all the places that we can match up. And so that was my job at those schools. And I feel like that will help to be a, to be a collaborative person that can, that can bring people together. So that's it.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, so you definitely have a lot of, uh, experience with school districts, or at least with the Alpine School District. Uh, it sounds like you've been involved for a really long time. Um, as a, as a kind of follow-up to that, what would be some of the lessons that you feel you've learned from the Alpine School District? Like what we're, and what I mean by that is, I specifically would like to know, what was the good, what was the bad, what was the ugly, right? What are the things that you want to replicate? What are the things you want to just be like, we're never doing that again, kind of a thing?
Here's the thing. That's what I've been asking everyone else. You tell me, because, um, a person that you elect to the board, the person you elect into seat four in Orem is the person that's gonna, that's speaking for you. So that's what I've been asking is, what did we like? What didn't we like? And, and, and what do we want to start new? Um, I, and I'm open to, to anything because we're building a district from the ground up. That means we get to, um, kind of look at how we are gonna do, how are we gonna do our, um, high school? Uh, the question I get most is, can we, can we finally move those ninth graders into the high school? Um, I'm open to that. Um, I would, I would love, I think what I would do, I have put this out there, that in the first hundred days, I think we should, um, have some surveys that we send out to parents, but then also, um, using our school community councils, because those are the places where those really smart people are that look at all the data and figure out where they're gonna spend the trust-led money. Let's give them a few things to ask their communities about. Would you like to move the ninth graders? How do you feel about leaving, um, junior highs just seventh and eighth grade? We may not, knowing that we may not have enough seventh and eighth graders to fill five junior highs. Um, how do you feel about an A-day, B-day schedule? What is the data behind that? Why did we switch to an A-day, B-day schedule? When a lot of, like, older people say, I went to all eight classes in the day. So what's the difference? I, I can see that teachers on an A-day, B-day schedule have to prepare a lot more instruction on a day because it's a hundred and twenty-minute class as opposed to a forty-five-minute class, but are they really using that whole hundred and twenty minutes? Or is there some wasted time in there? Could we, some classes, I bet it's filled, you know, bell to bell. But, um, is there research behind, um, doing all eight classes? Because there's kids that really need to be in a math class every day. They really need to have that reinforcement every day with math. They really need reinforcement every day in reading or, um, writing or even computer skills. They just have to do something every day. So I'm, I'm open to looking at, uh, looking at, at how we do our schedule and, and, you know, what COVID taught us was that, um, hey, we can, we can maybe, um, look at doing a different kind of schedule, maybe doing all eight classes and doing that Monday through Thursday and then having Fridays be where you get more help or you make something up or you retake something. So that, um, this is what I learned, um, just representing the parents of like Orem High and, um, Canyon View and those areas. We've, uh, we have a lot of sports families, um, traveling sports families. They're in clubs, there's soccer, um, baseball. And if they had the option to, to make sure their kids get all of their assignments done and all of their work completed Monday through Thursday so that come Friday morning, they're not missing school, but they're headed out to wherever it is that they have a tournament that weekend. Um, that is something that those traveling sports families would, would love. And I know that they would, they would keep those kids on track to, to do everything Monday through Thursday so they can play their sport. Uh, my kids were not traveling sports people, so that wasn't like a problem for me, but I, I saw that.
Not a personal thing, but you've heard it from the other individuals. That's great.
Yeah.
I, uh, I do appreciate the reaching out, trying to find out and the being open to, uh, wanting to know what the parents want, right? I, I think that's very important. Having the parents involved is extremely important. I think too many people treat school as a babysitting, um, facility, to be honest.
Yeah. I wish more of our schools actually offered, um, more, uh, half-day kindergarten. I, I, I think about that. I think about kindergarten and I think, could I have put my kid into all-day kindergarten? And I probably couldn't. I just, I just, um, I remember my son being in kindergarten, but he did the afternoon kindergarten and in the mornings, we would actually go and run the school store at Mountain View High School for my husband. And I loved it. I loved it because he was right there with me and, and he was meeting all kinds of kids and just being helpful and then, and then he'd go to ki-, he'd eat lunch and go to kindergarten. And so I don't know, I don't know if I would, if I would do all-day kindergarten, but yeah. Um, but on that same note with Alpine, the way it is, we also have a lot of families in Orem where the oldest kids are actually helping to get the younger kids to school. And so they wind up being late to high school. So what if we, we, I'm super open to pushing the start time or for first period to start more like at nine o'clock or nine fifteen so that those kids are, could get, um, could get to their siblings to school and then they would be on time. But then we could also put in a zero hour for the kids that don't have that, but, but want to get all of their classes done earlier. So I'm super open to looking at all of the ideas we could do, um, based on the needs of our parents and families in, in the district.
So I, to me, that definitely sounds well and good. And I will say though, in my experience, and maybe it's just because I've only grown up with the Alpine School District, um, I feel like change has always been hard. Like, what you're, what you're suggesting sounds great. I'm like, yeah, that does sound great. Let's have more options. Let's, let's have some flexibility here. But those, those type of, uh, situations or, or rules or whatever you want to call them tend to, in my experience, not happen.
Yeah, they, it scares people.
Yes, that, yeah, yeah. There's definitely a lot of people who are scared. They want things to stay structured, stay the same. I, I understand that, but I also think that we do need to be a little more creative with our, our school districts, or at least me personally.
It's a new district. It's a new district and that puts everything on the table. Everything's on the table. But like I would tell those families that when we were, you know, when they would close a school and they were gonna put two schools together, that, um, I know change is hard. I know it's hard to change your whole community and your whole, um, everything you know, but, um, but with time, you will, we will remember, oh yeah, we used to have a school and now we're here and we, and we love it. We feel super included. So I, bravo to the schools that have had to, um, put communities together. You have Parkside, Cascade, Centennial, they've done, they've just worked really hard at helping everyone feel included with their activities and, and just the things that they're doing for their communities. I just, it makes me happy. It isn't easy. Don't take, don't think it's easy, but it definitely is awesome.
No, change can be hard, but it can also be very rewarding.
Yeah.
Um, to kind of double back a little bit to like what I would call the ugly of Alpine School District, what do you feel that those in your, in your district, in your section felt was the reason they voted to split the district? What, what was so wrong in their eyes with the Alpine School District at the time that it needed to be split?
Well, I think it just got too big and you had seven board members representing 14 municipalities. So that makes you even more disconnected, right? Because it's so big and people just felt like they weren't being heard. And, um, I, and I think it also comes to money, right? So they were gonna, they had proposed a bond in 2022 that was $600 million. But of that, the things that Orem, Orem specifically would have seen in improvements was only about, um, 12 or 13% of that 600 million. But we were, our tax, um, property taxes were gonna cover like 20% of it. And, um, I know a lot of people were just unhappy that they weren't getting things and they just saw schools closing. They saw schools closing and here's this district that's getting bigger and, and I think the two board members that represented Orem in 2022 and 2023, um, just, um, were not, they weren't listening to the majority of parents. They weren't listening that, hey, wait, we, even today, the person I'm running against, um, she advocated fiercely against the split, but I kept telling her, wait, uh, as the PTA person, we didn't want an Orem-only district, but we did want to, we do want to split. We want a collaborative split with the, from the district that leaves us in good standing with all of the, with the two other districts so that when it comes to shared services, um, that they're gonna want to work with us. And that, that's not happening. Like, that's not, that's not happening. It's becoming very contentious. And so I can see that, that you, 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 we're gonna need to have some strong negotiators, um, that's, that represent the Timpanogas District in place.
Yeah, fair enough. I, uh, I think the, I mean, there's, there's obviously two factions in the United States, um, that are, are very powerful and in my opinion, I think both corrupt. Uh, I, I think the more centralized we get with power, it just, it tends towards corruption. It doesn't matter the, it, it, just the bigger it gets, there's more corruption. That's kind of my, my point there. So that's the main reason I was for, uh, the split for Utah County. Um, I do live in Utah County. Um, I'm trying to interview everyone in Utah as much as I can, but, uh, this one, this one's a little more, yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's gonna be a lot, but this one's more close to home. So, uh, for me, the, yeah, I, I think just the splitting allows for more better representation, right? To your point, it's like, they're not listening to the parents and to that point, they don't need to. You know what I mean? Like, the bigger you get, the easier it is to ignore the individuals. Yeah, exactly.
Why should they? So no, um, anyone who knows me knows that I'm gonna ask 25 rooms of people about, what do you think? What do you think about this? Do you want to split? The, I'm telling you, the overwhelming majority of PTA members in Orem and Vineyard, because that's who we polled, because that was who was involved in that 22, 2022, um, Proposition Two, said, well, yeah, no, I, I would be very open to a split so that we can get our buildings addressed. Our, we have, um, we have aging buildings that need to be fixed. The West needs more buildings, period. And in, and, and in Orem, we have the three smallest high schools. So, um,
I didn't actually know that.
Yeah, we have Orem, Timpanogas and Mountain View. And then our other high school will be Pleasant Grove. And then we'll have five junior highs. So, but, um, um, Orem High is the smallest high school. Um, but we, there's room at each of those schools if we wanted to move those ninth graders. That is, it's totally possible. Uh, but the, anyway, yes, they, I, I feel like, um, there, that you should have your person that represents your area be super accessible. Like, that you just call them up or, um, they, you know, you're attending school community council meetings, you're attending, um, your PTA meetings. I think after the, we should have a first hundred days and say, this aren't, these are our goals in the first hundred days. We gotta hire a great superintendent. We gotta hire a, a great business administrator. We've got to go through policies, um, all the things we want to do in the first hundred days. And then after those hundred days, have a town hall meeting, um, at, at one of the high schools in the auditorium and introduce our new superintendent and our business administrator and then go over all of our goals for that first hundred days and where we're at on them and what we've done. And then what, what people would like to see. I, I think, um, we should have our, our district, um, our board meetings. Right now Alpine, they used to go from school to school. And it seemed like around COVID, they stopped doing that. And now they're just strictly held at the district office. Um, no, let's, we don't even have a district office. Let's hold our board meetings every other week at a different school. Go in and meet the people of that school, meet the families of that school, find out what's great about that school, find out what they need fixed at that school, but let each school show us, show us what they, what they are and what they have and what they need and, and, and make it accessible by moving that around every, every time so we can get to see who we're talking about, what building we're talking about, what, um, program we're talking about. Um, I, but I heard some weird reason why they don't do that. They said it's because we don't have enough Wi-Fi to stream a meeting at each school. And I thought, my goodness, it is the year of our Lord 2025. If that is true, then the current board needs to upgrade all the Wi-Fi before they leave office and dis-, and dissolve Alpine School District. I just don't think that's true. I think, right? That seems weird, right?
I mean, maybe if school was in full force when they're holding their meetings, but yeah, if, if they just.
Talking about in the evening, you know?
That's, that's my point. Like, yeah, the only excuse you could have is like, well, students are using Wi-Fi. Well, okay, do it when they're not using Wi-Fi. It's that easy.
So, but that should not be the reason. That should not be the reason we don't go to each school because we don't, I, I'm a person that have, has started businesses from zero, from just nothing. We don't need a district office to get started. We just need a space. And if we have to use a, a different school every other week, let's, let's do that. Let's do that before we go, before we go building ourselves some offices and whatever. We can make this work pretty well without doing all of that.
Yeah, no, I could definitely appreciate that. Uh, that actually helps lead me into, uh, my next question here. The, the going to every single school and being able to meet with the individuals of that school, I think is very important for this question. Um, what, what are the values or the culture that you would like to institute into the foundation of this new district that is, that is being formed?
What culture I want to institute, um, parents, listening to the parents, um, listening to, to where they're at and what, I, I think we need to, um, think about, um, setting some kind of, some standards. We've kind of gone away from standards, I feel like, and just as in general. And, um, I just think, gosh, why, why are we not holding kids to a standard? Um, the standard says, we're not wearing our pajamas to school. We're not gonna wear our pajamas. There's, that's a standard. And if you come to school in your pajamas, we're gonna have to get your parent down there and, um, and, and see if we can't fix that problem, right? I think there's just a lot of standards that we're not enforcing because I don't, I don't know if it's that the board is not backing up the superintendent or the superintendent doesn't back up, um, the administrators, but when you have a district so big, um, standards sort of go out the window. And so now that we're gonna have smaller district, I want people to think about what standards would you like to bring back that we've kind of gone away from and, um, are not holding our kids to. And we're not gonna, we're, we're not gonna use curse words in elementary school classrooms or in the junior high or at the high school towards teachers. We're not gonna do that. Mm-mm. I think that's a, yeah, I, that's not, that's not gonna work, right? We need to hold, so I would like it to be a, a district that is collaborative and listens to the parents and then, but at the same time, at the same time, I'm gonna need parents to get on board with, they're gonna hold my kid to a standard. And, and, and we set the standard and they have to help us enforce that.
Yeah, fair enough. I can appreciate that. I, I think, uh, again, there's, there's, uh, tends to be two factions. Utah tends to lean a little bit more Republican, especially here in Utah County. I, I think the, the number one thing I've heard from most individuals that I talk to is ultimately, all we really want is accountability. No one's really looking for revenge. No one's looking for vengeance on the federal or local level. They're like, no, we, we created rules to be a society. Just enforce the rules that we created, please. Like, that's all we're asking.
Exactly. We're all, that's all we're asking is, uh, we want to do is, is set a standard and hold people accountable to that. And, and in this, and in this world that we'll now live in, that there are three districts in, in, uh, Orem, from Orem to the Point of the Mountain. If you don't like the standards we're gonna set in our district, there's other districts. You just have to drive them there. Yeah, you can pick. You can totally pick, but, but I'm hoping that parents will, um, will see that, um, we're just, we, I'm a person that just wants, um, kids to get a good education, a good solid education and learn how, when they graduate, be ready for the real world, not be ready for college because not every kid is made for college. Um, I love that we have a whole CTE department that is, one of their programs is they build a house every year. And that doesn't mean those kids are going into construction, but those kids can fix their own plumbing problems or they can electrically wire their house they build someday. Um, but I, I hope parents will just, will just see that, um, it, my goal is, um, the same goal they have, right? I want all of our kids to get a good education and be able to walk out of their house when they turn 18 and, and go off to wherever they go and be a successful adult. That's what I'm hoping.
That's great. I, when I was in high school, um, I took this finance class and the first month was fantastic. I felt like I was learning. I was excited. Uh, I've always somewhat enjoyed, uh, you know, just money and how it works. And we were allowed to like do some paper trading. It was really cool. But then the rest of the year, I mean, it was really just one month. The rest of the year, we basically watched The Apprentice. Like, that was, that was our learning. Um, and of course, as a teenage boy, I was like, man, this is awesome. This is the best class. I don't have to do anything, right?
Yeah.
But now that I'm older, I'm like, you know, you could have taught me how to do taxes. You could have taught me how the, the tax system works. You could have taught me how to like actually save up and budget. And, and none of that actually happened in my school, uh, for whatever reason. It was very upsetting and.
Yes, because it's, that is, financial literacy class is the most important class high school kids take. The most. And if you were interested in finance, my husband and I, every year, we, um, we go to New York at the end of the school year and we, um, when school is out in Alpine. He's retired. We do this on our own. We go and we volunteer with the Young Investors Society. So there is a club that was started by a guy at BYU and he's like this superstar, uh, to these finance kids, kids, high school kids that want to learn about finance. Um, they learn, um, they do a stock pitch presentation. Um, it's competition. So the kid that won, won like five grand to put into his stock. Um, they, um, they learn how, um, to manage money. And, um, we started out this year, we just went in the end of May, we started out going to the Bloomberg Building in New York, going to the top floor. They fed these kids dinner. They sat down, um, and gave them advice, solid advice, like, get up in the morning, be on time, dress for the job you want, not the job you have. Look people in the eye when you, when you meet them and shake their hand. And then they sat at tables and they taught them how to network at a table, like invaluable things that kids can use. So my, my goal is in our new district to do a, a YIS chapter among the high schools and the junior high. Well, if we move our ninth graders, then that'll be just that much easier. We would do a YIS chapter for, for Timpanogas District because I think we have so many parents that could help us with this, right? They could mentor kids. They could give them internships. So not all kids are made for, for, um, the trades. Not all kids are made for college. There are some kids out there that are definitely inter-, interested in finance and investments and, and go get, get a Robinhood account. That's what I tell you.
That's fair. Yeah. Well, and even more importantly, not even that, not everyone's meant for trade or meant for school. Yeah. Well, and even more importantly, not even that, not everyone's meant for trade or meant for school, like our economy also needs everything. If everyone became a software developer, well, then what is Utah going to do? We're all going to be up a creek and no one's going to have a working house. You know what I mean? So.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I very much agree.
I love M-Tech. I now want to keep that relationship, which it will stay intact in our, with our new district. But you can go to M-Tech and they pay, they waive your tuition. You just pay the, the fees and you can do HVAC, you can do low voltage, you can do welding, you can do cosmetology, you can do, um, they have a culinary arts. They are, they have everything. Now, our new district will have some of those programs. Because at Mountain View, they have a diesel tech program that, um, will remain there. And they do cabinet, cabinetry making at Orem High. They have a huge welding program at Tepanogas High School. So, um, it makes me wonder if maybe we shouldn't consolidate all of our CTE programs into one of our schools. So that campus is the CTE. They do this down in, um, the St. George area. All of CTE is in one building. So that if they do A day, B day, you do A day, you do your generals and you have to go to, you know, another, a different campus. But on your B day, if that's your CTE day, then you would go to that campus. So there's, I think there's benef, pluses and minuses to the A day, B day. A day, B day will line up more with concurrent enrollment at UVU. And it will also align better with, um, uh, M-Tech. Unless they're going every day, which some kids do. So, um, yeah, keeping these programs alive, you, you're going to need a plumber. You're going to need an electrician. You're going to need a roofer. You're going to need all, all of these things. And, uh, yeah, I'm just super excited about it because I just, I'm, I'm a huge, my husband was a career in technical education teacher. And so that is, I, I love the career in technical education people. They are all good people over there.
Fair enough. All right. Uh, so to move on for the, uh, next question I have here, um, what are, what are some of the problems that you expect to face with it being a smaller school district, right? We're moving away from this really large one. Of course, that's going to mean greater resources. It's going to mean, uh, some other benefits that a smaller school district won't have. But what are those going to be from your perspective? And how are you planning on overcoming those or tackling those?
Well, like I said, we have aging buildings that we probably need, um, to, to get some, you know, do some repairs. But it'll be, it, we will, we will be a, a district that is real estate rich. Our, we have two empty schools right now. Um, but our, our schools are built on a very large footprint here in, in Orem and in Linden. So I think what we're going to probably have to start with is a boundary study to see where the, um, the most amount of kids are. We have a lot of, we have very full schools in Vineyard and that's not, we're not, that's not going to go down anytime soon. They're still growing out there. So, um, should we maybe shift the boundaries east? And, and make use of where we have space in Bonneville and Westmore and in Cherry Hill, Orem Elementary, Aspen. We could sure use more kids in Aspen and just shift all the boundaries. And again, I know what I'm saying when I, when we talk about shifting boundaries. That's going to take people that have for years had their kids going to Aspen Elementary. And now they may shift over and now they're in Linden Elementary. And I know that's hard, but if we, if everybody is getting shifted around to kind of even out the schools. A lot of people will be in that same boat. And you just got to take a leap of faith here that we're going to, we're trying to even out the, the population at the schools. And, um, but our biggest problem will probably be, um, we got to figure out, um, funding, some funding. Because there is, you know, we, we learned that, um, you know, Orem schools were being subsidized by the other schools. We have a lot of Title I schools. So we're going to have to figure out, um, the funding. We're going to have to figure out, um, our special education. Cause that's, you know, you, I, I think we take care of them first before, before we do anything else, take care of them first. Um, we want to look at, you know, we're going to keep our ALL programs and our DLI programs. Because I, I just think there should be a program at every school. So that kids wake up and are excited to go to school that day because of whatever program is at their school that they're, that they're going for. I just think kids need a reason to be excited. Like, let's go to school because it's going to be awesome and I'm going to have my ALL class or I'm going to be learning my language or whatever it is. So our, our biggest problem, I think, will be the, the funding. But I think, um, we would just need to, to move some funds around and, 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 yeah. And we need some help on the, on, with some legislation that has to do with um, property taxes and how much money is going out the back door to developers. So if we could put, maybe put a cap on that so that they can't take more than a percentage at any, uh, one RDA, then look at doing something like that. That's going to be hard though. Yeah.
That's fair enough. What about the, uh, like, what are your feelings on the Utah State Board? How much, uh, involvement should they have on the local, on the school district itself? Um, how much control or not control should they have?
Well, right now they kind of dictate, right? What, um, the amount of hours and days and, and, and what you can teach, what you can teach, what you can do, what you can do. I think that everything starts with having, uh, a relationship with the, with the board members on the state board that represent your area. So right now, I don't know how great some of those relationships are. And so if, if we could get to a, a really great, um, working relationship between our board and the state board, our board and the legislators, our board and, um, city councils and mayors, right? Right now, we've just seen a lot of, um, some people on our, on the Alpine School Board that just have no relationship capital with anyone. And so that means nothing gets done. They just fight back and forth and they don't speak and that's it. Like we, but I, I think, I think there's something to be said about establishing, um, some relationship capital with people. Where you have a mutual understanding that we're both, our boards are both working for the same thing. Or as a school board member in the city of Orem, I want to have a good relationship with the city council members and the mayor that I'm not going to close a school and try and sell it, the land off to someone. And we make all this money and it's not good for the city. I think, um, we just need to, to, to put, um, I'm more of a bridge builder. So I want to build a bridge between, um, the school, our school board, new school board and the city councils and the mayors. I want to build a good bridge between us and the State Board of Education. I want to build a good relationship between us and the legislators in our area. Because that is not, for Orem, that has not been happening for several years.
Okay. Yeah, fair enough. Today, there's a lot of controversies in our schools on certain topics and, uh, different relations of things. Basically, there's DEI, critical race theory, praying in church, uh, whether or not the Bible should be allowed. There's, uh, there are transgender students and everything. How do you plan on handling these type of, uh, tend to be controversial situations at your school?
Well, I plan to follow the law. And I, as far as I know, I think Donald Trump has, um, said there's not to be any more DEI education in the schools. I've planned to follow, follow the law, whatever the law says. Like you said, we should, we should, there's, there are rules and laws in place and that we need to be accountable to that. It's not up to us to be like, well, I don't really like him, so I'm not going to do anything he says. It doesn't work that way. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. When you talk about the school board being, um, nonpartisan and, and other pla, other elected officials, they're supposed to be nonpartisan. The problem is, is that, is that the, the person, and I can speak for people that I, that I know that are on the school board, that the current school board, and they say, well, um, I, I don't, I didn't vote for that mayor, so I'm not going to sit down and have a conversation with him. I didn't vote for him. Where does that get you? Where does that get you? It gets you to today where we're splitting Alpine School District into three. That's where that gets you. So you have to say regardless of, um, what party they are a part of. If that person is, if the person I, we need to speak with and we need to sit down with, I'm just going to do that. I don't care that I didn't vote for that person or I voted for this guy or I voted for this lady. It doesn't matter. When you're on the board and you're an elected official, your job is to work with everyone and have a good relationship with everyone. Because that's what's in the best interest of our children. When you put your personal biases aside and say, I have to do what's best for our children. Yeah.
All right. Yeah. I can, uh, definitely appreciate that. I, I, it just comes down to me that the school, in my experience, shouldn't be a controversial place for the children. Like, the, the thing that upsets me the most is as parents, these can be controversial matters because they do matter to us as adults. But as a child, it shouldn't, it shouldn't even be involved. It shouldn't be around. Like, we need to, we need to, it's not that I want to shelter our kids because I do definitely think they need to be allowed to experience the world, to know what the world actually is. We do have too many snowplow parents and helicopter parents. That's a thing. But at the same time, yes. But at the same time, we got to let them learn.
Depending on where you live, you could call them Learjet parents.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's true. Like, we, um, there's things that, um, you know, we, in the junior highs, in the junior highs, I, there was a boy over at my house a couple of weeks ago. I was teaching him how to, um, how to make bread. Because that's an important life skill is how to make bread. And he said something about in his junior high, he knows of about 15 furries. And they're protected. And I think, okay, so I had this cute little kindergartner, right? He was, and he thought he was Spider-Man all the time. And when it came time to go to kindergarten, I was like, we don't want anyone to know that you have to go back, you have to turn into Peter Parker now, right? And put all of your Spider-Man stuff away and we're going to go to school. And then when you come home, you can go back to being Spider-Man if you, if you want. But I, I, kids wearing tails and ears. I, really? In junior high? Yeah, no, no. When I say we're going to set us, we need to set some standards. I'm, I'm thinking that, um, we, no, that's probably one that I'm probably going to get, yeah, we're not putting on, we're not putting on tails and ears and, and that kind of, no, 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 no.
I, I don't remember what school it was, but it was in Utah that the students were claiming there was the, uh, the cat box, what are they called?
Litter box.
Yeah, litter box. There was a litter box and the stu, the, some of the teachers and things were like, no, that's not here. It doesn't exist. But I'm like, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm probably going to trust the students on this, but they're saying there's a weird thing going on. It probably is going on.
If you see kitty litter in a school, sometimes they use kitty litter to absorb something.
No, that's fair.
But it's not in a box.
Well, and that's my point. Like, when the kids are saying, hey, there is some weird stuff going on and why isn't it in the classroom or something? I'd be like, okay, yeah, that, that is a little strange. I think it needs to be investigated.
Yes. No, what they're saying is there are all these people that, and it's a contagion. I think that happened down in like Payson in Nevo School District at a junior high.
Yeah.
Junior high, I, I, I'm so worried about those kids that, because you got to think, when you're coming into seventh grade, you're starting puberty and your brain is all whackadoodle, right? Everybody remembers being 13 years, 14 years old and being like, this is weird. I feel weird and your emotions are all over. But, um, I, I don't think that the appropriate, um, or the best, uh, course of action there is to be like, well, then you must have been born in the wrong body. Maybe you're a dog. I don't think that's a good idea. I think we just need to remind kids that they are just perfect the way they are. And yep, it kind of feels like it's, I don't know if this is, I thought we were still having like, um, the days, the, the, the days where they talk about, they have all the girls in one room and all the boys in one room. And they explain this, but maybe we just have to keep reminding them that puberty does things to your brain that makes you think things. And then you're, and then you're already kind of awkward because you're trying to fit in at the junior high and you're trying to make friends. You know what? It's okay. You're all, you're all the same. You all have the same feelings and you're just perfect the way you are. Just, just, just know that. You're perfect the way you are.
No, I agree. I, um, not to make it too political because that's not my intent with like interviews or anything, but, uh, this happened in Utah and it's, it is a big deal that Charlie Kirk was murdered. And it is believed that the individual who murdered him was part of this like trans furry type movement that's going on in these different, in colleges. But we have seen, again, in Utah, that some of this is creeping into the, uh, local levels. It's creeping into junior highs and even into elementary schools. I, I don't want to go into who this is, but I, I saw a younger individual that I am aware of and know, and she was drawing, and by younger, I mean, uh, prepubescent, who was drawing images of basically furry characters. And it was really strange to me to see someone in a prepubescent drawing a furry character. It's, it's just a, it was a, like a fox with, with like a hood on and it's doing some weird pose or whatever. And I was like, hey, this is weird. How do you know about this? How are you aware of what's going on in the world today? It, that shouldn't be happening, in my opinion, at all in our school systems. And it's a little disturbing to me that we are leaving reality. Right now, what's happening is there's a, there's a large group of individuals, left and right, I would argue, but there's a large group of individuals that are choosing something that is not based in reality for whatever this is.
I, I, um, it, it seems that it has taken a hold. You saw it in the high school, then you now see it in the junior high. You see it coming into the elementary schools. So when they, when we talk about appropriate books in the library for children, if we are, if we all have a different definition of what's appropriate, I, I think we, we, we have kids that are on devices way too much, including the Chromebook, right? You've got the one-to-one right now, starting in the junior high and high school in Alpine School District. How long do you think it's going to be before they try to go, well, now that Alpine is dissolving, maybe they won't. But how long, how much time are they spending being productive on those Chromebooks? How much time are they being productive on the Chromebooks in junior high and in high school? How much time is a teacher spending having kids on a computer and giving them X amount of work and then they're playing games? You see, um, you see a lot of that stuff with the animals. You see a lot of that in the Japanese anime. I've seen that as, as a, as kind of a precursor to having those thoughts and, and, and the, and dressing like animals. Look, it's going to take all of us to, to, to keep the garbage out of our schools. But not everybody agrees that it's garbage and that's where the problem is. We have to find a, a happy medium where, okay, at school, we're not going to entertain any of this stuff. You can do that on your own time, but at school, we're here to learn. That's why I'm saying it might be better to go to the, the all eight classes a day. It keeps it to where a teacher is, just has enough time to teach it, assign homework, maybe get something done and then, and then the class is moving on. Because then we, we don't have time to be on devices. I think the cell phone, getting the cell phones, um, out of the classrooms. Fantastic. Fantastic. We, there was an incident at my, at Canyon View, that involved one of my son's friends. And I was so grateful that he did not have his phone. It was in his backpack and he couldn't get it. But I also have, he also has one of those phones that I can turn it off from my phone. Which I did, but I also texted him and said, I need to tell you something. I, this is why your phone is off because I don't want you on your phone until you speak to me. Because I knew with the incident, my, my son, it, it was not good. And to tell him, to be able to, to not worry that it was, it was on phones, being texted and whatever during the day. Yes. But I, also, I haven't heard a ton of people that complain about this. Every SCC meeting I've been to, that question has come up is how is the cell phone policy going? And every school is like, it's been great. It's been great. We don't have kids. We don't have kids, um, um, complaining about it, but we also don't have parents complaining about it. You would think the parents would be the ones complaining, you know, I can't get a hold of my kid. But, but like I said, I, something happened and I was so glad my son could not get to his phone or wasn't on his phone or wasn't near him because I needed to tell him something that had happened and I needed his, um, other kids not to tell him, not to, not to tell him something. And I was so grateful that I didn't have to worry. And, and, yeah. So, but the cell phone's gone great. But yeah, you can see through the computers and the one-to-one, um, kids are, kids are clever. I mean, I'm sure you are clever, right? There's a reason why I own a security business that my dad owned. And I get people all the time be like, can you, can you put something on my kid's window? So I know if they open the window. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can. I can also make it so that, um, you know exactly what time they came home from your system.
Yep.
And they're like, oh, oh, I'm like, hey, I didn't learn this, you know? Last week, I learned this when I was a teenager.
Yep, yep.
All the things my dad did. Cause those kids are clever, man. They can figure out a way to get around a VPN or get a VPN. They can get, they, they are clever.
Yes, they are. They're very clever.
They want something, they are clever.
Yep, they're going to get it.
They're going to get it. Yeah.
Well, I, I will say, I have one more question, but I'll say before I get to that, uh, question is, uh, my personal opinion, not from like a school perspective, if your child is under 16, don't give them a phone. That's, that's my opinion. Don't give them a tablet. Don't let them use technology as much as is reasonable. Cause I do think that there is a reasonable amount to be able to get on a computer, blah, blah, blah. But if you give them a cell phone, just let them text you, get one of those like flip phones or whatever.
I have, my son has a phone, he, and I love it. And I, and I, I'm not even a, I'm not even, what do you call it? An influencer, a promoter, whatever. He uses a Bark phone and it's great because I control which apps, I control how much time, I can turn it off. I control his contacts. Someone can't just text him without me. And there's no way for him to get around those things. And then he can't get on the internet unless he's just at home. He can get on the internet at home and that's it. But, um, but it does help when you, when your kid is, uh, my kids play tennis. And so sometimes they'll play and then they have to wait until the next match comes up. And then, and if they leave that area or something, I, it makes it easier for me to know where they are. And, uh, and all of that, but it's very, he's very limited. He probably doesn't want me telling people that, but he's very limited on what he can do with his cell phone. Yeah. But no, I agree. Like when you hand the kid a smartphone with access to the internet, you've just given them a loaded weapon.
Yep.
And you can see it because some kids, you can tell just, um, my son and my daughter calls it brain rot, where they just, everything they get from the internet just turns into brain rot. Speaking of which, do you want to know what they've turned into brain rot now?
Sure.
Uh, the term alpha male.
Really?
So, so if you take Gen Alpha, right? And there's some cartoon or something going around and it says, I'm the Alpha, right? It's making fun of alpha males.
Uh huh.
And so I said to my son one day in the car that, um, something was on the radio, the news was on the radio. And I was like, ooh, that guy's an alpha male. And like that, you know? And he goes, oh, that's brain rot. And I was like, uh, do you want to say that again? And so we had this whole conversation that they have now changed the meaning of a alpha male. Think of all the alpha males, you know, all those like guys that are in Department of Natural Resources and they fish and they hunt and these are alpha males that when you, when, when crap is going to go down, that's, you know, to get, that's the guy, right? He's going to take charge of the situation and he's going to keep everybody safe. They've now commandeered the, the term alpha male to mean basically brain rot. And I was, I looked at my son and I said, so what does, what would happen if, um, if you, if you didn't become an alpha male? And my son said, well, if I wasn't an alpha male, I wouldn't join the military. I wouldn't be a police officer or a fireman. Someone that is in that job where you have to take control of a situation and make sure people are safe. And I was like, so changing the term of alpha male to mean something dumb, just brain rot. Uh, it, that just infuriates me. Because he's right. If we continue down this path of telling our boys that you don't want to be an alpha male, who's going to join the military? Who's going to be our police officers? Who's going to be those people that keep people safe? That are those, and are there bad eggs in those, in those areas? Sure. But by and large, those are, those are good people. And if you, if you make that out to be something that it's dumb, that makes, that makes me worry for the future, right? Because, because they are trying to take away, keep our boys be, from becoming alpha males. Scary.
Yeah, I don't like that, especially because of the, the name of that generation is Generation Alpha. So it's like, if you are a male and you're a Generation Alpha, like you, it's already degrading that person. If they hear alpha male, it's like, well, I'm a male and I'm part of Generation Alpha. Does that, like, it, it, it's, it's more, there, there's a bigger connection between the two is what I'm really getting at.
Yes.
That's disturbing.
Yes. So I, so I just want to encourage people on the weekends. We all know, we all have an uncle, we all have a grandpa, we all have a dad, we all have a neighbor that would round boys up and they would go on an overnight campout. They'd go Whittlewood with, they'd learn to use their knife. We got to bring that back. We got to bring that back. Because I, otherwise we're going to have a generation of boys that, that won't know anything, that, that don't know who they are and, and who will protect everyone else? If, if not for the, the alpha males. So.
Yeah.
I'm worried.
I'm worried too. I'm, I'm right there with you. That's partly why I'm doing this. All right, great. Well, uh, my last question hopefully should be easy enough. Uh, just what is the one thing that, uh, you want most voters to understand about this election and your candis, candidacy?
That I want them to understand that, um, that it's because I listened to the parents who said, I don't want an Orem only split, but we need to split. That that's why I'm running because, because you have a whole section of candidates running to be on the school board that campaigned to not have, to not have a split at all. And they were actively campaigning in other cities. They've wreaked havoc across Utah County. And the parents by and large wanted this split. Would I have liked to have everyone vote on it so we could all say, see, we all, the majority of us agreed on this? Yeah, I would have, but we didn't get that. But we're splitting anyway and it's happening. And I want people to be excited at the possibilities of the things that we can do to, to make sure that our children get a, an stellar education right here in Orem, Utah.
Great. Thank you. Uh, is there anything you'd like to shout out? Do you have like a website or like an X or anything that, uh, you'd like people to go to?
I do. Oh my gosh. You think I have an X? You think I am that sophisticated? No. But I do have a website, JulieWalkerForSchoolBoard.com. And my email address is there, my phone number is there. Um, uh, you can find me on Facebook, uh, Julie, Julie Walker For School Board on, Julie Walker For Seat Four on, on Facebook. Um, but yeah, no, come to my website and send me a message and tell me all the thoughts that you have about how the new school district should be. Cause I would love to hear that. I would love to hear, again, what is, what, what you like in Alpine, what you don't like and what you'd like to start. Like, let's get those, let's get those onto a spreadsheet so that we can sit down and be like, okay, overwhelmingly people want to do X. Okay, let's do that. Let's go find, let's go make that happen. So, yeah. Um, yeah, that's what I, yeah.
All right. If you wouldn't mind, I should have asked beforehand, but if you wouldn't mind, would you, uh, send me an email with some of that contact information? I'll make sure to include it in the description.
Sure. No problem.
Great. And then, uh, just to do my little outro, uh, you can find me on YouTube and Rumble at Reese Crockett or, or sorry, at Reese J. Crockett, or my channel is Reese Crockett. Uh, you can also find me on X at Reese J. Crockett. Uh, like the video, subscribe. If you disagree with anything I said, go ahead and leave it in the comments or argue with me on X. Uh, if you disagree with Julie, you can, uh, find her on her website and let her know why she's wrong. Or hey, maybe you can also let her know why you like her. Um, please share the video with anyone you know. If you, if you, if you have an estranged, uh, mother, you know, reach out to her, share this video, let her know. Maybe it'll help create some talking points. I don't know. Uh, great. Anything else you'd like to add before we go?
No, but thank you. Thank you for reaching out and, um, yeah, I, I, I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you. And I appreciate yours. Until next time.